James Meyer.
Norma Drummond.
Mary Seminera.
So we do have a quorum. One of our members is stuck on the train and he will be here joining us as soon as he can get here, but we do have a quorum, so we're good to go. So I'm going to ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we have had just a few changes to our agenda. There is not going to be any action on item number 12. And item number 10, the applicant has pulled his application, so we actually have to just do a refund because it did not go to public hearing. So those are the only changes to the agenda as of right now. So there's no, essentially no item number 10 or no item number 12. We do have a conflict with the use of this space for the October 22 meeting. Our next two meetings are Tuesday, October 22, and Tuesday, November 26, which will be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. There is likely to be a hearing or a trial in this room on our next meeting date. Which, so we have set up alternate space to be at the Fire District Headquarters out on Route 52, 2502 Route 52. When you, when the letters go out to your neighbors, we'll make that decision. We're just waiting to see whether that trial is actually going to happen. So your neighbors will be noticed, if anybody that's going to be scheduled for a public hearing for October, your neighbors will be noticed with the right place to go to. But as of right now, I want to put on the record that it could be here. If it's possible, we're going to be here, but it may very likely be that we will be at the Fire District Headquarters out on Route 52, just because this space is needed for another purpose. All right, we do have one set of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the first items on our agenda are public hearings. Those are applications that this board has had an opportunity to review already, and so now we're looking for the neighbors' comments. You are probably more familiar with these properties than we would be, so we are, we want to hear whether you're in support of or have any concerns with the applications that are before us. So we do have a number of public hearings on this evening, the first eight, actually. And then from number nine on are reviews, which are generally the first time we're seeing an application. There are a couple repeats. There are a couple applications that we have already seen ones before, and we just have asked the applicants for a little bit more information. So with that in place, I'm going to go right into our agenda. So item number one is an adjourned public hearing. It's Appeal 3882, Klaus Garage, Inc., Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage, Inc., 2619 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an expansion of a nonconforming use and interpretation of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance to the 100-foot buffer requirement on Route 52 in order to continue to display the display of cars pursuant to Sections 194-3, 194-JS-16, 194-86, 194-116, and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's been several months since we've seen you.
Only one or two.
It's been several months since we've seen you. And last, we left it with you when we opened the public hearing and
Right.
we had a discussion about the limits of this board's ability to approve anything, and so you were going to go back and seek additional information. The site's been operating as Klaus Garage for, we all know, for decades. Supposedly, the cars have been sold on this lot for decades, but we can't find documentation to prove that. The code does allow this board to grant a 50% increase for whatever the use was in 1973 or 1974, some back time, way back when. And so we were looking for you to get us some documentation. And in the event that we could not get documentation, to at least, having heard our comments last time around, to give us another suggestion or suggested use for what you're thinking would work on the site. Again, it's important for us, for businesses in East Fischel to do well, but you know, anything this board does could potentially set a precedent for other business owners, so we do have to be very careful about what would be allowed or not. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening. Keith Stoudt, Harvard Cronin Engineering, representing the applicant, Klaus Garage, Inc. Thank you for all that background information. Last we were here, we had provided a plan that showed, well, since we were here last, we tried to find some proof, legal proof, that the prior owner sold cars via New York State DMV dealer registration. We weren't able to do that. We also spent some time dormant, trying to just figure out what it is we could or would like to do here. We spent some time trying to find investors for the site to see if we can come up with a different approach. And then we decided, well, let's take the plan that we presented to you, modify it a bit, because we, you know, we understand the concerns. But come full circle, the reality is, the owner, Dave Lawrence, is a car guy, right? So he bought the site knowing that he could fix cars, repair cars, and sell cars, because that's what historically has been going on at the site. But what we wanted to do initially was to provide a parking area for the cars up closer to the road. So we decided to, for tonight's discussion, we pushed that back so that we would be about 50 feet from the property line with a smaller parking area for up to 16 cars. What I have handed out to you tonight is an aerial of that stretch of Route 52 west of the Teconic to roughly, a little past Heritage Plaza. And as you can see, I think it's Heritage Plaza. As you can see, Heritage Plaza, and these are rough numbers, but plus or minus 60 feet from the property line is the edge of that whole parking lot. And you know, Rand Manning Real Estate, the parking lot's right up on the property line. Continuing to go east, the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza with that little retaining wall, that's probably 30 or 40 feet from the property line. Next to that's the old Leon's TV site, and that's like right on, the parking area is right on the pavement. And then the next property to the east is the Nezahua Plaza, and they're probably 30 to 40 feet from the property line with their parking. And then the next parcel with the blue square, that's the current vet, veterinary office that they just constructed. That parking area was put back 100 feet. And then next over is Klaus, where my little red rectangle is approximately where we are now showing, an area to park cars. The site will remain to operate as it has been since the prior owner started it, and Dave is looking to continue that. We just want to be able to have a hard surface to put cars on and provide some landscaping to pretty up the site along Route 52 there. Now that the veterinary hospital is in, a number of trees were taken down, so coming from the west towards Teconic, you can now see the site a little bit, but still traveling east, west from the Teconic, you don't really see the site, the Klaus site, until you pass Crestwell. And by the time you get there, you're already past the entrance. So we feel what we're presenting tonight is something that the owner can live with, 50 feet back from the property line. But we do plan on removing the sign that's there and putting a new sign and relocating a bit. And the rest of the site will operate as it currently does.
And the mound?
The mound?
The mound?
Well, as part of our compromise, we felt that we could put a little two-foot-high mound where we could put a display car, which may attract people as passersby, so...
How far, how far in is that?
Right now, it's shown as 20 or 25 feet from the property line, which would be about 30, 35 feet from the edge of pavement. And it'd only be about this high. And we would, obviously, we would plant some flower beds or some, you know, low-growing brush around that, as well as providing, in the back of the parking area, we were planning, there's a picture on the plan showing a split rail fence with some plantings to screen the cars that are being repaired from the back. So that's where we are now. I think what we're presenting is fair, knowing what's been going on at the site for the last 40 years, and that we can, we can make this, you know, look nice now.
This should not be news to you, but the cars that are parked along, your customer cars are also parked in the buffer, so...
You mean along the east side there?
Yeah, even though they've been, we understand, they've been getting parked there for a long time, but they don't belong there either.
We're showing right now on this sketch that they'd be also 50 feet back.
You're going to start 50 feet back?
Well, if you can see on that, this plan here, we have a little row of low-brooked bushes, landscaping here, so that's about 50 feet from the property line. That would be where we would start the customer parking.
Okay, all right, so you are proposing to move that back to, I mean, or is there any way to move at least those cars, the customers' cars, into the rear of the site?
Yeah.
Behind the building?
Well, we got cars in the grass area on the west side of the blacktop driveway. We would like to keep that area there because of overflow, and that's where people tend to park when they're, come to pick up their cars, or in this case, hopefully to look at a new car to buy. It's been there forever, and we are, we are limiting it to 50 feet.
I'll answer questions from board members.
I'm concerned. I don't ever remember living here since 1989, cars parked as close as they are now by Klaus Garage. And I would hope there would be at least a good face showing that you won't be doing it. Why submit a plan if you're going to keep doing it? I don't know, again, why customers' cars have to be parked so close to the highway? You're not selling those. There's no reason for that. I don't see that as a huge compromise as to what you're asking for when you're asking for quite a bit. If you want us to have a mixed use, you want us to consider that when it's not allowed under the code.
All right, I'm not quite following. You're talking about the row of cars on the east side of the drive?
Yeah.
They are pushed back?
Last time I drove by there, they were pretty darn close to the road.
Right, we're proposing to...
Well, again, I'm asking you a different type of question. You're proposing to change it. Why have you been parking so close to the road in the meantime?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
That 50-foot buffer zone, let's call it, you're going to be putting vegetation there, you said?
It's going to be a lawn. So right now, there's partially, it's partially covered with gravel.
Right, yeah.
That'll be replaced, and we'll go back to a lawn area. So it'll be landscaped and, you know, the grass will be maintained by a landscaper.
So you're, you're talking about eight, parking eight cars across the 50 feet back?
Yes.
So that's approximately 80 feet, thereabouts, with fencing in front of it, but, you know...
Well, fencing behind it.
Fencing behind that area, okay. But now with that, and I don't know what else to call it, you call it yourself a mound, so with that mound in front of it, with the length of a car, you're going to lose at least, you're going to be blocking at least 20, 25 feet to be able to display a car in the front. I personally don't think that that's a productive use of the space. I think you draw more attention to the cars further back. Without that there, you're just going to call attention to that one car.
And then, and you got, yeah, you want to call attention to that car, plus you want to have a sign for the business, correct, up by the road.
Well, he has one there now, but we're going to put a newer one in there now.
Yes, in some ways, a double sign.
Well, it's not going to say "used cars" on it.
Well, but again, the purpose of that display is not, we had one for the landscaping company out on 376, and they wanted a display because it's decorative. They have an old tractor, and that was a special consideration because it's decorative. They're trying to make their property look nice by doing that. By putting another car there for sale up front, in essence, you're not really complying with your suggestion that will be 50 feet away. Or you're, again, double signing. You're going to have your sign, "Used Cars, Klaus Garage," whatever that sign is going to say, plus you're going to have a car up front, 20 feet away from the road.
Okay. If the display car is causing some trouble here, we can, we could talk about eliminating that.
It certainly helps my
Yeah, makes it easier.
view of this, because it's not allowed by, the sale of cars is not allowed by the zoning.
Understood.
And so you're kind of flaunting it that you're doing that, so...
We're not trying to flaunt it. We're trying to attract, you know, we're trying to attract business, you know, that passes by.
I get it, but it's...
I get it, but if it's causing the board some concern, we'd be willing to take that off the table.
Have you met with Michelle Robbins at all about this new proposal? Because you're coming to us, you're not at the planning board right now, so...
We worked at the planning board when we started, then we referred to here, and then we had a little hiatus from here, and then we're back. So I have not shown this specific plan to Michelle yet, but I don't know if that, she's, does that get reviewed at the planning board, assuming we can get through the zoning board?
I think what I need to be sure, before we go to the trouble of giving you, you know, approving anything, we need to be sure that you're not, that you have sign-offs from at least a review by the other professionals for the planning board. All right, so, I mean, unless there's any other questions from this board, I think what I'd like to do is hold you off until the next month anyway, and then let Michelle and/or the engineers just take a quick look at this to make sure there's no obvious concerns that are coming out at them from their perspective.
Okay.
All right.
The only question, and I think you said it, how many vehicles are you looking to put there?
Excuse me?
How many vehicles are you looking to put there?
Uh, it can hold up to 16.
16?
It's two rows of eight.
Two rows of eight, cars and trucks, mixture of both?
It's mostly cars, you know, you see what he's got there, Audis and BMWs and some other, you know, it's mostly cars, right?
Once in a while.
Once in a while, you might have a pickup truck or something.
So five years old, six years old, in that range there?
Yeah, well, he's had some old 60s.
You got, you got '04.
Flyerbirds.
He's got some nice cars.
Well, it's, you know...
No, 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 my point is...
I haven't paid attention.
No, my point is, it's not the cars that are being worked on. It's nicer cars are out there for display.
Yes.
They're washed, they're clean.
Yes.
You know, so, and then with the new sign, I think it actually will look a little better than it looks now.
Yes, agreed.
Yes, we believe so.
All right, so are we in agreement? Let's let the planning board, let's let our professionals take a look at this, just to make sure that we're not going to run into any issues we're not even thinking of.
Okay, all right.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I do need to ask if anybody has any comments for or against. Let me find my agenda. The request from Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage, requesting a whole host of variances for his site on Row 52. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn to next month? And it will be next month, right? Keith? Next month, not?
It might be.
Just for the benefit of others, this application is over a year old, okay?
You were saying it's not going to be in this building, right?
It will likely be at the Fire District Headquarters, correct?
Okay, down on 52.
Right, okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you next month. Okay, item number two. Appeal 3911, Triditi Tara Triditi, 32 Carroll Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot variance to allow a six-foot fence to be located in front of her dwelling, as well as a 25-foot front line variance for an existing eight-foot-by-10-foot shed pursuant to Sections 194-98 and 194-107D of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, so we've obviously had an opportunity to review your application. You have a shed off to the right side of your property that's, it's not as far back as it should be, but what you've demonstrated to us, that the topography or the grade of your site goes down so significantly after that, that that's really the best location. It's as far back from the road as it can be without being affected by the topography of your site. You also have a gate that's in the front there that you now want to link, that there's a, you want to, you're proposing a fence?
A fence.
To go in the front of the, of the area there?
Correct.
You submitted a landscape plan?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so it's, because we, it's approximately 72 feet of fencing, and so that's, for us, that's usually a concern, seeing any large expanse like that of fencing. So, yeah, other than that, I don't know that there were any other issues. Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
No.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Tara Triditi, 32 Carroll Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot variance to allow a six-foot fence to be located in front of her dwelling, as well as a 25-foot front line variance for an existing eight-foot-by-10-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, reference to Appeal Number 3911 by Tara Triditi, requesting a two-foot variance for proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard and a 25-foot front line variance for existing eight-foot-by-10-foot shed in the front yard pursuant to Sections 194-99 and 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance, located at 32 Carroll Drive, Hopewell Junction, and resolution being offered by zoning board member James Myers. And whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, whereas this action is a type-two action under secur, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order, and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the shed is already there, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant's house is placed perpendicular to the road, and they are trying to get some privacy, as there are many people using the road to get to the rail trail. The shed has been in this location for many years, as there's a steep decline on the applicant's property, and this is the only reasonable location for the shed. The variance requested is not substantial, as the fence is set back 16 feet from the property line, and the applicants have submitted a landscape plan in order to soften the visual impact, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variances.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set, okay? Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, item number three, Appeal 3916, Gogrichiani, Vladimir Gogrichiani, 3569 Route 52, Stormville, is requesting a two-foot sideline and 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage built in 1944, a 38-foot front line variance for a pre-existing 644-square-foot dwelling, also built in 1944, and an expansion of a nonconforming structure in order to construct 247-square-foot addition to the dwelling pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and Schedule 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we had a chance to review your application with you last month. You, zoning did not come into play in East Fischel until 1963. Your house was built in 1944. There was no zoning at the time, so obviously, there was no rules in place for how close to the road or anything like that. You did not build it, obviously, so both your house and garage were built prior to zoning being in place, but because you're here requesting the addition to that nonconforming house, that's why we're just going to clean it up while you're here. So you do have a relatively small house, 644 square feet, that we, that you're looking to do a, to add a family room on to, a 247-square-foot addition. You actually told us that there's a small three-foot fence in front of it that's pretty well going to hide the addition, that you're going to re-side the entire house
Yes.
when it's done, so everything is going to match. The addition should not stick out. It should look like it belongs there. So unless there's any comments or questions from board members, I'll open it up for public comment.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Vladimir Gogrichiani, 3569 Route 52, Stormville, requesting a two-foot sideline and 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage, a 38-foot front line variance for a pre-existing 644-square-foot dwelling, and an expansion of a nonconforming structure in order to construct a 247-square-foot addition to the dwelling? I do want to get on the record that because your house is on Route 52, you do have a 100-foot setback that came into play in 2001, 2002, something like that, 2002, I think. So, again, not until 2002 did you even have the requirement for the 100-foot setback. That's why you need the 73-foot front line variance. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Mr. Gogrichiani? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
This is Appeal Number 3916 for Vladimir Gogrichiani, for a two-foot sideline and 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage built in 1944, and a 38-foot front line variance for a pre-existing 644-square-foot dwelling, also built in 1944, and an expansion for a nonconforming structure in order to construct a 247-square-foot addition to the dwelling pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and Section 194-123 of the zoning ordinance located at 3569 Route 52 in Stormville. Resolution is offered by zoning board member Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances, and whereas this is a type-two action under secur, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order, and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant's house is 644 square feet, and he would like to enlarge it in order to add a family room to his house. This is not a bedroom and will not increase the bedroom count in the, in the home. The variance requested is not substantial, as the proposed addition will not be placed any closer to Route 52, and there is no addition planned for the existing detached garage. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variances.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set. Now you'll go with the building department to get your building permit in place.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Good evening. Not tonight, when, yeah, when their office is open.
Thank you, good night.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
All right, item number four, Appeal 3920, Flores Corp., Flores Corp., 1563 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting to amend their special use permit in order to allow 24-hour operation of their gasoline filling station pursuant to Section 194-85 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, we've had an opportunity to review your application. The gas station has been open since 1999, or 2000. It got its approval in 1999. At the time, it was requested to go 24 hours. It was, and there was, it was requested again in 2001 to have 24-hour operation. The neighbors at the time objected. The zoning board at the time did not approve a special permit to allow the 24-hour operation. You came back to us that some circumstances had changed. It's now been 18 years later. The world has changed. People, there's a lot more people who are driving the Teconic Parkway at all hours of the, of the day and night. In addition, the planning board has now given approval for another gas station to be on the other side of the Teconic, on the same route. And so within that, because there is no existing residential neighbors around there, that gas station was in fact granted 24-hour existence. The other condition that we found had changed since the original application for the zoning board to reconsider this application, was that the original filling station that actually used to be on the Teconic Parkway around Hosner Mountain Road has since closed down.
Correct.
So there is actually very limited opportunities for gas along the Teconic Parkway for anybody who uses it after midnight.
Correct.
So you did ask us to reconsider. At our last meeting, the board did vote unanimously that there were in fact circumstances that, you know, did encourage us to take a second look at this. Since then, we, I can tell you, we've gotten a couple of letters from some neighbors of the property, so I do want to read those into the record, but I just want to, so the other thing, by the way, I should add, is that our last meeting, you provided us some documentation about the, the owner also runs a store down in, further down in Putnam County
May, yes.
along the Teconic Parkway. That is open 24 hours, and at our request, you provided information that spoke to exactly how much traffic and how much business actually occurs in the midnight to 5:00 AM, 5:00 AM hours. And it was pretty significant. It was pretty eye-opening for us, that with the exception of like a Sunday night or a, you know, I think maybe Sunday morning, it was some, there was like two nights that were just a little lighter than the rest, but otherwise, there really was significant business. So it was clear to us that, that there is a need, and the world as we see it today has changed, and people are in fact working weirder hours and longer hours and later hours. So there is likely a need to have this revisited. We did say we needed to hear from the neighbors. We did say we needed to hear from the neighbors.
Correct.
And so that is the purpose of this evening's public hearing, is for us to have an opportunity to hear from any neighbors of any concerns. So before I read into the record the letters that have come in, I just want to ask if board members have any questions or comments?
No, I don't think any particular, but even, you know, the only slow times was for a couple of hours each night.
Exactly.
It certainly doesn't make sense to close for two hours and reopen, so, yeah, the business is significant and I think you have the overlap from people who work late and coming home early in the morning and people who have to go to work early in the morning and have to get out, so, yeah, I think that, again, we approved unanimously to open it up and take a look at it.
I have no questions.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so I do have three records, three letters I want to read into the record. The first is dated September 17th. To whom it may concern, it has come to my attention that the hours of Flori Mobile Station are going to be changed. The mobile station has become something that I can depend on 24/7 and I am concerned that the convenience of the store is going to be compromised with this significant change. As the executive director of a pediatric cancer nonprofit, I am traveling a lot at all hours. I live in La Grangeville and my route almost always consists of me traveling to the number 43 exits to get onto the Teconic State Parkway. I always, in capital letters, make sure I am fueled up and have everything I need for my upcoming trip at the Flori Mobile Station. This includes road trips to various children's hospitals and trips to the airport at all hours of the day and night to travel. Please reconsider changing the hours of Flori's Mobile Station on Route 82 in Hopewell Junction. This is my preferred convenience store as it is a one-stop shop for me that is easy in and out. Sincerely, Erin Stimson, Executive Director of the Friends of Jachlin Foundation. The second is dated September 17th. Sir or madam, I'd like to express my interest in having my voice heard. I am a Hopewell Junction resident off of Ridge Road, the road directly across from Flori Mobile. I have come to depend on the mobile station's convenience as it has been open and available to me at all hours of the day and night, unlike, not that it should have been, but that aside, that's my own comment. I am concerned with the potential changes to the hours of operation and prefer that the station be allowed to stay open 24 hours a day as that is what makes the station convenient to me and to many of my neighbors and community friends. Thank you, Dennis Murphy, 7 Ridgeview Road. And then last, we have, nope, this is for the other ones, so there's only two applications for yours, two letters for yours. So what I'd like to do is open it up to any additional comments. If there's anyone here who wishes to offer their comments for or against Floris Corp., 1563 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting to amend their special use permit in order to allow 24 operation of their gasoline filling station.
I would like to be in support of it.
Okay, hold on, you got it, at the appropriate time, you come up. When you're done speaking, I will ask that you sign your name, print your name on the clipboard in front of, you know, in front of recordizer over there so that we have your name for the record, okay? So go ahead.
Very good. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I am Tim Rhodes with the law firm of Zerrin &amp; Steinmetz. David Steinmetz sends his regards. I'm here tonight on behalf of Gasland Petroleum. They are the owner and operator of the Dunkin' Donuts located at 1600 Route 82, which is approximately 250 feet away from the applicant's property on the other side of the Teconic. I'm here because as an immediate neighbor of the Floris gas station, Gasland has serious concerns about this board granting the applicant's request to amend its special use permit to allow it to operate 24 hours. For at least three reasons, we request that the application be denied. First, as Madam Chairman, as you mentioned, we note that in issuing the applicant's existing special use permit, this board considered a request for 24-hour operation, held a public hearing on it, and ultimately denied the request, which was later renewed in 2001 and again subsequently denied. This board's original distinction, or decision, is baked into the terms of the existing permit and should not be lightly overlooked here. We also understand that the applicant has violated the terms of its existing special use permit by attempting to operate 24 hours without first getting permission from this board. The fact that the applicant has already violated its existing permit terms should give this board pause before allowing the applicant to operate for even more hours. And Madam Chairman, I just wanted to address two of the changed circumstances that you mentioned. The first was that a filling station located on the Teconic had recently closed down, and the second was the increase in traffic and general population in the area. Well, with respect to the traffic, we have concerns that without a left turn on eastbound Route 82, the additional hours could exacerbate traffic congestion in the area and that the DOT needs to take a hard look at the traffic impacts of the potential 24-hour operation, particularly given the increase in traffic since the application was first considered. And with respect to the shutting down of the filling station, I'm informed that there is a Shell station six miles down the road in the same town, as well as two miles away in the next town over, and that there are a total of five 24-hour gas stations already in the area. So the market for 24-hour gas stations is already fairly saturated. Secondly, we know that this board is committed to giving this application a full, fair, and thorough review. However, we have serious concerns that a member of this board has already publicly stated on Facebook before this hearing that he supports the application. And respectfully, we submit that this is inappropriate for a member of a board to publicly prejudge an application before holding a public hearing on it, and that as a result, the public record has been tainted. And we urge Mr. Limetone to voluntarily recuse himself from this matter, only this matter, on the grounds that his objectivity may have been compromised. There is some case law supporting this request for recusal. There was a court of appeals case in 1990, 1616 Second Avenue Restaurant, Inc. versus the New York State Liquor Authority, where the chairman of the State Liquor Authority made public comments about a case pending in front of him and failed to recuse himself, and the court of appeals held that this violated the public's right to due process. There was also a case in 2008, more recently, in front of the appellate division fourth department, where three members of a planning board had impermissively prejudged an application for rezoning by signing a petition in favor of the rezoning, and where the board chairperson wrote a letter to the mayor supporting the rezoning and saying that she would really like to see the project happen. The appellate division fourth department held that this constituted an appearance of bias requiring the annulment of the planning board's site approval. Now finally, we urge the court to consider denying this application because of the applicant's close proximity to nearby residences, which distinguishes it, as Madam Chairman mentioned, from the other commercial operations in the area where there are no residences nearby, and it increases the potential adverse impact of noise, visual impact, and traffic caused by the 24-hour operation. For these reasons, we ask that the board deny the application to amend the special use permit. Thank you.
Before you go away, you're, so you think we need to have New York State DOT to do two traffic checks at midnight to 5:00 AM because of traffic concerns related to this request? Because there's no left-hand term?
Partially, partially.
That's what this is requesting?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be sure I heard you correct. Your second sentence, or your second point was that?
And also, to clarify, the traffic check wouldn't be just for those limited hours in the middle of the night, it would be...
Or not, the special permit already exists for his operations at all other times, so this is just related to the use of this, allowing the gas station to operate between midnight and 6:00 AM or whatever, you know, so it's, I just want to be sure I heard your request correct. The second was that you said there's a gas station six miles away in one another town, et cetera. Even New York State DOT, their signs along the parkways, they only post things that are up to three miles away. So they don't even post things that are more than three miles because people are not going to go six miles away, just as a standard, okay? That's New York State's DOT standard for distance for allowing people. So six miles is a little far for somebody to be going at midnight if they're not familiar with the area.
Okay.
And then you also say, and we acknowledge, we clearly said to the applicant, we know this is close to residences, but isn't it my understanding that there are residences proposed to actually go behind the new gas station on the east side of the Teconic? They're not there now. I get that, and so buyer beware, when they buy those units, the gas station will likely be existing, but there are, it is in fact zoned residential behind that property.
I'll take your word for it.
Okay, well...
I don't know.
And those residents will block any noise or light to the other residents that are already there. So, I mean, if there's a demand for that, to increase residents closer to the gas station, I guess it's something that we have to consider.
Yeah, okay, I, thank you, I just wanted to be sure I understood. Regarding Rocco, that's going to be up to his, that's his...
I just didn't understand. You were indicating you were from Gasland, 250 feet away?
Yeah, it's the company is Gasland, but the business is Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, so they're not selling gas or anything there?
No.
That's why I just want to clarify for the record.
Yeah, they're just selling donuts and coffee.
And are they the owners of the other gas station that got the approvals?
They are owners of several gas stations in the area, but I don't know if it's the exact one you're referring to.
Okay.
It is, okay, it is.
What's the hours of this Dunkin' Donuts?
What are the, I'll defer to the owners.
Hi, my name is Mitch Nashwat. We own the plaza across the street from the, what is it, we are the landlord for the Dunkin' Donuts. Mr. Floris, he hired Keenan Bean as an attorney to close my business 11 o'clock. He was opposing the 24 hours to open at that time because the neighbors didn't want it, too much traffic, the same thing we see in here. We have a station 55 on the Teconic open 24 hours, two miles away. We have another gas station open 24 hours when the Teconic Parkway closes, in Oakwood Station, 52 on the Teconic. And we have a future gas station open 24 hours, which is 400 feet away from him. When I got approval, he got the urge to come and open 24 hours, and he's also my tenant, 24 hours and 52. Thank you.
Mr. Limetone, can you state for the record any associations, affiliations with Floris Corp. that you may have?
I have no association with Floris Corp., except that I've used the bathroom in the Mayapack store.
And do you feel you can be objective moving forward?
I'm sorry?
Do you feel you can be objective moving forward on the application?
Yes, I do feel I could be objective, and I'd like to also state that if you listen to my comments, which I posted, the last part of what I said was that it is ultimately up to the public to decide, and that's why we're having a public hearing. I did state I am pro-business, pro-business for you, pro-business for him, pro-business for anyone who wants to do business in East Fishkill. And again, at the end, I stated, but it is ultimately up to the public to decide. This is a public forum. We talk here in public. Facebook is a public forum, not as public as this. So my words on Facebook were the same words that were spoken here in this public forum. And what we do here on the board is we discuss issues. We discuss issues and then at some point we decide, and that's what was being done. Issue was being discussed, and we're here now for a hearing, a public hearing, for people to decide. So so far, we've had two people in favor and we've had his competitors not in favor, of course. I mean, I've been in business before, I understand that.
Just to address Mr. Limetone's comments briefly.
You're going to address the board.
Okay.
You're not going to address Mr. Limetone correctly, please.
The entire board. And actually, I also wanted to clarify one other comment that the board made, which is that we would suggest the DOT looking into the overall traffic impact caused by the 24-hour operation as well as the increased traffic since the applicant first received the special use permit. So it just calls for a holistic reevaluation of the traffic impact and not just during the limited...
Was during your site plan review, was a traffic count and a traffic study called for?
During our site plan review?
Mm-hmm. Yours is the most recent application, that's been before the planning board, so that's why I'm curious if the planning board felt it was important enough to request a traffic count because of the significant increase in traffic.
Yes, he did. We also, we've proven the traffic there, over a million dollars, we have to add another lane in order to enter to my gas stations.
Okay.
And the gas station I got approved was gas station before Floris Station.
Shh, please excuse me.
It was a gas station in 1990s and it closed by the DEC because the food family, they couldn't afford to put a new tanks in there. This mobile gas station came afterward, and they opposed it at 24 hours, and I got, I didn't open the 24 hours when I leased my Dunkin' Donuts and by the same applicant here, and he hired an attorney, and he prohibited me not to open 24 hours, I closed 11 o'clock. And he used as a gas station as example. And just to refer to what he said, Mr. Rocco, there's about three, four gas stations off the parkway open 24 hours. 52 on the Teconic, Hyatt Garage, I owned that station, 24 hours. 52 and 55, and the Shaw gas station, 24 hours.
And you do a lot of business at 24 hours?
We, we just keep it even, it's not the point to go on business or not business, okay?
Well, I guess the question is, that's going through their mind...
Well, I don't know, you're not my CPA.
Please, while I'm talking.
Yes.
Let me answer fast my question. I'm sure what's going to go through their mind, as you keep saying you have all these places open 24 hours, do you have an unfair economic advantage over them? What do you say to that issue? If you're open 24 hours and people are going to be going by, maybe right by their gas station to get to yours and they can't compete? Can you just respond to as to why there should be that distinction?
I'm here tonight, my business closed down 24 hours because of him, because he want a benefit from the coffee sale, because he opened one hour early before me and one, two, three hours after me when we did the Dunkin' Donuts. And he told me in his own word, if he sells salt, I'm going to be against you. And I sell salt. If I sell coffee, and I sell coffee, I'm going against you. And he hold my project here for seven years front of the planning board, okay? And I don't think that's fair. The station that I got approved was gas station before he came to the town.
Okay, let's, can we limit your comments, please, to the application that's before us? This is not the planning board. We are the zoning board, we are only here regarding a special use permit for 24-hour service. So if I could ask you to limit your comments related to that, we'd appreciate that.
Well, for 24 hours of my gas station, I have no residential across the street. No lights will affect the neighbors across the street. He has five, six residential homes, and those are people who complains. At that time, a lot of, all the neighbors, I was here at the planning board at that time, over 300 people came in. This time, they snuck in, nobody here. The station closed, he's supposed to close 11 o'clock, I think he closed 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. Sometime he open 24 hours. He think he's Moses, he could walk on water because it's Floris.
Excuse me, sir, so you said you have several gas stations open 24 hours, correct?
Further down, one by the Teconic in the town of La Grange, one in East Fishkill 52 and Hyatt Garage, all has been 24 hours.
Oh, yeah, I know that one, I've been there, yeah. So fair to say you're in favor of having a business open 24 hours?
I have some stations that doesn't open 24 hours, but I obey to the ordinance and law of the town. And Robiners on 9D, the one allowed me to open 24 hours, we close 11 o'clock.
Look, I guess again, maybe ask my question a different way. If you're open 24 hours away, within several hundred feet, how is the fact that he stays open 24 hours going to affect the traffic count on Route 82?
The traffic count, I have to do a traffic study when I did my location, and the DOT has got to cost me close to a million dollars out of my pocket to fix the entry, come in and left turn and out out of my gas station, which is, he have a lot of accidents for his gas stations, and he got approved 20 years ago, should be revisited. And this board itself, it says, traffic increase, population increase, you should visit that traffic. And there's a safety here for people. Somebody have a sleeping, come at 3 o'clock in the morning, making a left turn, boom, what happened? Oh, the zoning board give him granted because people need it, but also people need safety, concerned about the safety. I went to the DOT at that full study, and I have to add the shoulder and maintain a left turn and a right turn out of the gas station. And the DOT also, when I opened the Dunkin' Donuts, made me to put a single light, traffic light... light, cost me 1.8 million dollars to enhance the road for the traffic. At that side of the parkway, the left side of the parkway, nobody spent a dime over there, and it should be revisited for the traffic.
Okay, but again, we're, I asked you to limit your comments to the fact that this would be open additional hours between midnight and 5:00 AM.
Yes, there's a traffic there in the morning, and we'll be backing up to the parkway, and I think the traffic study is very reasonable ask to see if the area will handle it.
I just wanna be clear, so are you saying that, in regards to the traffic, that there's gonna, that if he stays open 24 hours, the other store, Floris, there's gonna be more traffic coming to that area? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And that's why we need a traffic study?
Yes.
So if there's more traffic coming, it's probably good for you too, right?
It does not matter good me or mine, but I, I, I have to spend a million dollars for the DOT to accommodate those people, the overflow, okay? And you guys should concern the traffic study. Maybe need another lane there. The same way the DOT enforced me to put another lane before when I went to Dunkin' Donuts, they enforced me to, the town enforced me to put a single traffic light there, and I did. And, you know, this should apply to everybody. There's no exemption for someone, and someone, somebody has to, Mr. A has to do it, and Mr. B cannot do it.
Right, so you're concerned there's gonna be more traffic coming to the area if he's open?
More traffic competition, you could call it whatever you want, but safety, safety, safety is the number one. I, I own more than one location, and I know he's shaking his head. I own about 30 locations in the area.
Sure.
Okay? I know, I'll tell you something, okay? If there's a car coming out of Floris gas stations, and he is my tenant in one of the locations, and, and somebody's die, all of a sudden, the mobile gas stations, somebody die out of the gas station, I get affected by it. I do have mobile flag also, and I do have mobile gas stations.
Sure.
And I have a lot of locations around the area, and I'm concerned.
Sure.
And as a businessman, I'm concerned about my neighbors, and I will respect my neighbors. And if I have to close 11 o'clock, I close 11 o'clock. I will not disrespect my neighbors, and open 21 o'clock or over 24 hours, like, you know, I could carry the law on my hand.
Okay.
Obedient is nice to be, to the local law, to be obedient, not to be over the law.
You have nice businesses, like I said, I've seen them, very well kept.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One of you, whoever's gonna go up next, I don't have any.
Madam Chairman, I, I never got a chance to address one of the comments that the board made about the.
You can, you can get up in a, in a little bit.
Okay.
At this point, I, I would like other comments. I am asking, though, that anybody who's speaking needs to get up, needs to sign their name, please, on the clipboard on the table.
Sure. And your client.
My name's John Palasko, I'm a resident of Ridgeview Road. I've been up there since 1979, and I remember when there was a gas station at Floris before it was a restaurant, so I don't wanna hear what he said, it wasn't there, before John's was there.
Address your comments to the board.
Okay, you know what I'm saying, though?
Yes, I hear you.
There was a, there was a gas station there with the old pumps, I remember it well. Okay, so don't say it wasn't there. The fact that they aren't open hurts people in the area, believe me. I've been in, like I said, I've been in the area a long time. I used Floris for other things, they help the veterans that it has set up, which is another thing, but when I needed something for my child, I got to go to Floris. It was there, I had it, I didn't have to go run to Route 9. I know, everybody in the area knows, there's nothing open around here. Floris is a good place for the system, for the neighborhood. People use it all the time. My daughter goes to work down in Westchester, she stops there. My son works locally, and he uses Floris all the time. There's nothing from four corners over there up, like you said, to 55, for gas stations. The one that was down there is closed, the one up here is a wine testing place now, which was years ago, but there's no place to go that people need. And it's always open, it's always clean, and I have no problem with it as a resident, and there are many, many guys and people that I know would say the same thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maura Byrne, and I'm a vice president for a media company, and I've lived up here for 25 years in Little Switzerland. I'm also on the Little Swit, Little Switzerland Neighborhood Association. And with my job, I travel weekly internationally. I leave every flight, probably is leaving 6 o'clock from Newark or Kennedy. I'm heading out at 2 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning, calling an Uber or Lyft. I can always depend, when they were open, to be able to stop in there with Lyft drivers that didn't have cash, when they showed up to get me, to be able to make sure they had coffee in the morning, breakfast, and as the gentleman mentioned, about being able to go there. If you need, like cough medicine, if you need any kind of acid reflux, anything like that, that's the place I would stop. So to me, it's not only a convenience, it's also safe to have that there on the Teconic, because I have teenagers that drive up to Albany, and that's the place they can stop in to make sure they get coffee before their ride. So I think it's wrong, and so does the Little Switzerland Board, think it's wrong to have that taken away from us. So, you know, of the fairness is one thing, but convenience and safety, it should be there and open 24 hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, don't run away yet.
Okay.
If you're there all hours, what's the traffic like?
Nothing. I can tell you that I go there, there's nobody there. No, like a few cars at the most, but you know when the traffic's there? The traffic's there at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock in the morning, that's when the traffic's there. The traffic isn't there in the evening. Yeah, I should say during the middle of the night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And by the way, when it did come to our, the town's attention, we did ask the applicant not only to stop, cease his operations in those, in those hours he was supposed to be closed, but also to take down the sign, and he was extremely cooperative about taking that sign down, so. All right, anybody else? Again, we're looking to hear from the neighbors, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I get that correct. My name's Dennis Murphy, I'm glad you got my letter. I live up in Little Switzerland, on 7 Ridgeview Road. I've been there since 2004 with my wife and my two daughters. They've since grown up. One daughter now lives in North Carolina, but my daughter Jaclyn still lives with us. I run a foundation, you've heard from my executive director, Aaron Stimson.
Oh, okay, all right.
And it's called Friends of Jaclyn. The business is right on 1075 Route 82, right behind Michael and Joe's Pizza, down on the bottom. You're welcome to come in anytime, we'd love to see you. And what we do is we pair up children with pediatric brain tumors with sports teams all over the country. And we get treated at Memorial Sloan-Kettering. So my hours are not traditional. If I'm inpatient, I live there. My wife stays at the Ronald McDonald House, and when we bring our daughter back, we come back at all times hours. It's been a blessing for us to have Floris so convenient to us, not having to make that run over to Route 9 at 3 o'clock in the morning. And if she gets released, she doesn't get released, she get released at all hours of coming back from New York City. So we appreciate the, the support tonight, coming out for Floris, they've been phenomenal to my daughter. She's got special dietary needs, this is a real concern for me. She's got, from her chemo, burnt out her, her, her small intestine, so she's gluten-free. So the food, she's got special gluten-free in that food that we, we, you know, we have a strong personal desire to get in there anytime we come back from, from the city, and she looks forward to that, and not having to make an extra trip, and we've been spending all day in, in the hospital. So we appreciate you taking the consideration of, of keeping it 24 hours, and it'd be a blessing for us. And I just heard from Aaron Stimson, a lot of other children, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If not, would you like to put something else on the record?
You're raising a hand here.
Oh, someone else?
If you want, just go up. You're raising your hand, if you.
Oh, in the front. Do you wanna speak, or no?
You want, oh.
With all due respect to the folks that live up in, in Little Switzerland, I'm the neighbor, okay? Floris gas station is in, is basically in my front yard. It's about 200 feet away from me. I'm not concerned about the traffic, traffic that time of the night is, is, it is, doesn't exist. Does exist during the day, I know you're not concerned about that, but this has really put a crimp in, in my lifestyle there, when I have to sit at my driveway in the middle of the afternoon for five minutes trying to get out, but that's another issue. My, my main complaints against this, I don't want it open 24 hours, and my main complaints are the light and the noise. The lighting in the place is perfectly normal for a gas station, and would not be obtrusive if it was over on Route 9 in Wabinger Falls. Where it's located, it is incredibly annoying, okay? There is no night sky, there are no stars, you might catch Venus on a good night, all right? When the leaves are off the trees, I can read a newspaper on my front porch from the lighting in the gas station. That's how bright it is. And they don't turn it down at night. It would be different if they did, but they don't. The other thing is the noise. First of all, the structure of the gas station, it's a couple of hundred feet away, so you wouldn't think that the noise would travel that far, but because of the way it's constructed, it's almost like an amphitheater. It acts like a megaphone. So anything, whether it's the fuel delivery truck at 3 o'clock in the morning making a delivery, and there's not enough room for him to just swing through, so he's gotta back up. So there's the reverse alerts, beep, 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 which then wakes up all the dogs in the neighborhood, start barking, okay? Then there's the guy who pulls in with the 1,000-watt amplifier in the back of his Camaro, okay? And he's just gotta crank it up at 3 o'clock in the morning, coming through my windows. Then there's the, every now and then, doesn't happen frequently, but frequently enough to be annoying, is the person who forgets to turn off their car alarm, and then forgets how to turn it off after it's alarming, okay? This is, I can't, I can't really express clearly enough and, and effectively enough how annoying this has become in, in, essentially, in my front yard. It's only 200 feet away from me. As far as it being a need, it's, he's not providing life support systems, there are other, other options in the area. You've got the station right down here on 52. If somebody really needs a coffee that bad at that time of the morning, they can make it in their kitchen, okay? If somebody really needs gas because they're gonna go to the airport at 3 o'clock in the morning, they can get it on their way home at 6 o'clock. So, that's my feelings on it.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Good evening, my name is Ignatius Otten.
Excuse, I'm sorry, just one second, could I ask you to sign in, please? Thank you.
And I live right, Rich Road, which is about 250 feet from the gas station.
Okay.
And I live right close to Nick, and what he said right now was true. What is killing us is the noise. The noise is unbearable. I mean, we have Teconic right in front of us, that has also, it's noise that comes in in our bedrooms. We cannot sleep, the only time that we can sleep is after 12:00. And if he is going to open it 24 hours, it's really, really gonna be disturbing us, so I oppose that request, I don't want that to be happening, because it's really, really disturbing us, if it's gonna be like that, 24 hours.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? You wanted to say something else?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind. I'll try to be brief. First, we would just ask that the board keep an open mind about traffic impacts, not just in the middle of the night, but also during the day. If the, respectfully, if the board.
Hey, this, outside the purview of this board, okay? What we're here for is granting a special permit for the extra hours to be open 24 hours. We cannot deal with, it's not this board's issue to deal with the traffic during the day. That's a planning board issue. It is not what we're here for this evening, so I'm gonna cut you off on that, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Understood. The, the other point I wanted to make was in reference to the comments that were made before tonight's public hearing on a social media platform, which is that Mr. Limatone's remarks are well taken. I understand that his comments on Facebook may be very similar, if not identical, to his comments here tonight, but we'd just like to point out that there is a world of difference between making those comments at a public hearing, when you are on record, after you've heard evidence from both sides, and when the public has had a chance to listen and respond, than there is making those same comments on a private social media platform. And we would also reiterate some of the neighbors' concerns with noise and visual impacts that will be caused by the 24-hour operation.
Okay. I'm gonna have the applicant come back up, unless there's anybody else, any other neighbors that wish to speak first. Okay, come on back up. You did not provide us with a photometric plan, I would appreciate if you could have an engineer provide us with a photometric plan, so that we can see, to the extent, Brian, that any light spills off of the site, can we look to see if we can put any screens or shades along the backs of the lights, so that in fact, you're not lighting up the whole neighborhood, but you're keeping the light directed to the front section?
Yes. Now, i- if I may, and, and we'll talk about the lighting first, and then I'd like to respond to just a couple of the comments, if I may.
Well, yeah, 'cause I have another comment related to that, but if.
Okay. Brian's here, what we did is we brought in the lighting plan that was approved when we went through the original site plan application. Now, since the time of that approval, the fixtures that have actually been replaced with fixtures that cast light down more.
Okay.
The original plan shows very little light spilling off of the site, and again, that was with fixtures that were blowing, basically blowing the light right out and into the air. So Brian, I know, has contacted the town planner, apparently, in the past, what they've done is gone out there with meters, and, and, you know, we can certainly look at some of the things that would help the neighbors across the street to limit that impact with the lighting. Another thing that, that we talked about when we were here during the, the review process is, you know, our pumps have the TVs on them, all right, and our, and our station is typically playing music, and that is obviously something that we freely, you know, would, you know, tell the board that we will not do during, during those late-night hours. In terms of the deliveries coming in at 3 o'clock, or the guy with the Camaro and the big stereo.
You can limit when your deliveries come.
Well.
Okay? We, we can impose a limit, that, you know, it is, in all fairness, getting, I mean, there's nobody there now, so you're not getting deliveries now at 3:00 in the morning.
Well, what I'm saying is, we'll, I'll talk to my client about that, and see if that's something that we can control, and, you know, and we'll address any of the lighting to the extent that we can, certainly. There's a couple of.
Just on that thought.
Yeah.
'Cause as time's gone by, the color of light has changed.
Right.
So, yeah, it might be down, it might also be, if not overall brighter, but, you know, you go from this kind of fluorescent lighting to LED, and boy, that can make a big difference on your eyes and how, how that light carries.
Sure.
So, I, I would suggest that you go ahead and, and look at it from that point of view. Maybe it's really not the same as it was back then, more light might be spilling over.
No, that's, that's a request that we've already put in with the town, and certainly are happy to do that, because, you know, Brian and, and the town planner, town engineer, have done that in the past, where they go out there with a meter at 9 o'clock at night, they'll take a read on it, and then we'll, you know, propose some things that we can do with those front fixtures on the lot, to see if we can, you know, bring, bring that on the site if they feel that there's too much spilling off.
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Excuse me, sir? You're gonna address your comments to the board?
I understand, but this is just something he wants to know. It's the forward facing. Okay.
Can't believe it.
Those are the ones that.
Okay.
Okay. So again, what you're going to do before, between now and the next meeting, is you're gonna give us some reading, a photometric plan, so we can understand what the lighting is, where it's impacting, and what can you do to mitigate what you're hearing from the neighbors?
Correct.
That they are, in fact, being impacted by the lights. Regardless of where it's actually spilling, do you really need certain lights on all hours of the night? I don't know. That's, that's what you need to tell us, and you need to tell the neighbors.
Yes.
Okay?
Understood.
I would say, as a good neighbor, listen to the concerns that these gentlemen expressed and take that to heart and see if you guys can come to, they may have some ideas that, that'll work for you.
Yeah. We're certainly open to it. And, and Brian's, he's telling me that we can have that done by the next meeting, you know? So, I mean, we have the plan that's been approved, but that without any, anybody looking at it right now is not really gonna be as helpful as...
Deliveries you can control.
Yeah.
You can have the deliveries come in the morning.
Yeah.
Backup beeper is there for safety, but it's annoying.
Well, if, if the gas station is really heavily used in the morning, they probably want the deliveries in the afternoon, actually.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, that's not, I'll, I'll check that.
I know, but, but you can control that.
Yep, I'll check that.
All right?
A lot of delivery men like to come at two, three in the morning, because there's no one there.
Because they can get in, yeah.
They can get in and out, there's no traffic, like someone was saying, there's traffic at eight in the morning, so...
Yes, we'll take a look at that.
The music that you're vibing in, is it possible to limit the hours for music?
Oh, absolutely. Our plan is to cut music and cut TVs so that they're no longer on.
Okay. Um, as far as light is concerned, do you need the light for safety and security reasons? Or is it just for ambiance?
No, no, and it's not just to, listen, one of the things that we talked about when we left the last meeting was, you know, can we put some of this stuff on dimmers and so forth? And the concern is providing, you know, adequate, you know, safe lighting for our customers while also trying to accommodate the neighbors. So that's our job between now and the next meeting, is trying to strike that balance, you know, so that we can...
You're expressing very specific concern.
Yep.
About very specific lights, so I might make it easier for you.
Well, and it's, yes, it's good, helpful to know that it's a sign, maybe that's something that we can dim or, again, I don't, I don't know, but we'll explore everything, okay?
And as far as, um, you know, in, because especially middle of the night when people are coming, um, are you going to make any arrangements for, like, not, having limited number of pumps on so that you have less traffic, rather than having all the pumps on so that you have full flow, you know, full flow of traffic? Are you trying to...
That's not something we, we had considered, no. I mean, we were gonna leave, leave the pumps, but address the...
Light and the music.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
That, that would actually create more traffic if you had less pumps, because then you'd have a line.
People waiting.
For getting to those two pumps instead of six pumps.
Well, then you get people...
I mean, the big gas crisis of the seventies.
Well, you get people also pull in, and then they find out that that one's, and they gotta loop around and that type of stuff. But one of the things that was, that's been mentioned a couple times tonight that I wanted to address is, you know, when this application was approved in 1999, and it was originally put in as a 24/7 station, this board did not vote to deny that application. We heard the comments from the neighbors. We came back to the board and we said, "We are voluntarily going to limit ourselves from 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM." Once we got open and we, and, and things were busy, and we came back in, in 2001 and made that application, you know, the board was feeling at that time, hey, nothing really could have changed. In fact, there was a comment in the minutes from that meeting saying, "What's changed in five and a half months? You have to come back to us with the changes circumstances." So I, I just wanna, you know, be clear that, you know, we, in going into the special permit back in 99, my client was desirous of working with the neighbors and trying to address issues, and we remain that way today. And so that's our plan. I mean, we wanna make sure that, that we can try to strike a balance that everybody can live with, and hearing some of these comments, I think will, will go a long way in, in allowing us to do that. Okay?
So I think what I'd like is to have a motion to adjourn to next month, and then give the applicant an opportunity to see what they can do to address the gentleman's comments. I mean, if we can't, we, that's, we just factor that into our considerations, so...
Including landscaping and any other...
Anything else that can absorb sound or lighting, whatever, so...
Sure.
Or limit the lighting.
And we'll look in on deliveries also, see if we can do something with that.
Yes, please. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn to next month? Yeah?
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure, I don't know...
Brian?
Excuse me?
Brian, is you gonna wanna make another comment, or are you finished for this evening? We're gonna adjourn the hearing.
He's getting his contact information.
Okay, so I move to adjourn to October 22nd.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. See you next month.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, item number five is Appeal 3921 Reyes. Hector Reyes, 49 Haragon Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a four-foot sideline variance for an existing 15-foot by 30-foot above-ground pool, and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, to everyone.
So we had an opportunity to, to review your application last month. The pool was actually there when you purchased the property, is what you told us. You purchased the property in 2007. To the best of our records, it looks like the pool permit may have been pulled in 2006, because you actually said you put the liner in, it was just a skeleton, you know, the framing was there.
Yes, ma'am.
But again, you did not put it where it was, but you didn't realize there was an issue there, so you just, in your mind, you were replacing the, the liner. You also told us that there's a lot of vegetation that's screening the shed.
Yeah.
There's a lot of woods there.
Behind the pool, behind the pool and to the left of the pool, I do have my neighbors, I never gotten a complaint from them that I...
Right, and that was one of the things we asked, was, did you, did your neighbors have any objection to the fact that the pool's been there for at least 12 years since you bought it? So, so any other comments or questions from board members?
None.
None.
Um, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against Hector Reyes, 49 Haragon Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot sideline variance for an existing 15 by 34-foot above-ground pool, and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So in reference to PO 3921, the applicant being Hector Reyes, requesting a four-foot sideline variance for existing 15 by 30-foot above-ground pool, and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing 10 by 10 shed pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance, located at 49 Haragon Road, Hopewell Junction, and resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. And whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variances, and whereas this action is a Type 2 action under SECRE, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 18th, 2019, whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce a undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as both structures are already there and have some vegetative screening. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the pool and shed were existing when the applicant purchased the house in 2007. As the pool equipment is already in place, it would be a financial hardship for the applicant to move it, and if he were to move the existing shed in order to meet the setbacks, he would have to remove a lot of vegetation. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions beyond the fact that the property is located in a floodplain. The applicant is aware that he will have to apply for and receive a floodplain development permit. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above-stated variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Now you've gotta deal with the building department, okay?
Thank you.
That's where you'll get that floodplain development permit.
To my kids, 'cause they're watching.
Okay. Um, not, not tonight, you don't deal with them, you wait, wait till the office is open.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
Good night, good night.
All right, item number six, Appeal 3922 Morrow. Edward Morrow, 230 Creamery Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance and a 364-square-foot size variance for a proposed 1,520-square-foot detached garage to be located in front of the house pursuant to Section 194-107C of the, and the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. So you ha, we had an opportunity to review this last month. You have a very weird-shaped lot. It's like shaped like a weird S, okay? And so, there's no one straight area for you to be able to put a garage, except as you come forward, that there's the front, kinda back end of the S, for lack of a better way to explain it. And so what you've proposed is to be able to put this garage in the farthest back from the road, recognizing you can move it forward and reduce the variance from the rear property line, but then it becomes more visible, or more likely that somebody may see it from the road.
Correct.
And so you've suggested that it go back, further back on the property, it makes it closer to your house, and so it's easier. You've actually proposed some limited screening in the front of it to be able to...
Correct, did you get it revised?
That's not, in the front, toward the front, toward the front road.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. Yeah, I sent, I filed a revised site plan with, one had a color, color damage to it.
And then we actually talked about whether you could actually put some windows on that front to actually make it look like it's a smaller, because 1,500 square feet, it's actually pretty large. So the reason you need the size variance is because East Fishkill does limit the size of secondary structures or garages, so where they should be no more than 750 square feet or 60% of the footprint of your home. And so what you're proposing exceeds that by the 364 square feet, so that's why you need the additional variance. Um, so I think that's, again, you have very limited area on your lot to be able to put this, um, but we did wanna make sure that we had an opportunity to hear from your neighbors to see if there was any objection or any concerns in that regard. So any comments or questions from board members? Let's start with that.
You know, again, along with the windows, your carport will be on the back side, so it'll be looking like a house from the front, we're gonna make sure that happens.
Yes, correct, yeah, there'll be windows on the side as well.
Nothing else.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Edward Morrow, 230 Creamery Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance and a 364-square-foot size variance for a proposed 1,520-square-foot detached garage to be located in front of the house? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. The only other thing is, I was looking at the decision, I would like the decision to include the fact that it doesn't mention the windows.
Okay, so why don't you offer the, why don't you offer the resolution, and then you can amend it as you would like?
Okay, so, this be, this appeal being 3922 by Edward Morrow, seeking a 15-foot sideline variance and a 364-feet-square-foot size variance for proposed 1,520-square-foot detached garage to be located in front of the house pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Property is in the ownership of Matsukus, located at 230 Creamery Road, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by zoning board member James Myers, whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variances, whereas this action is a Type 2 action under SECRE, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce a undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. As the lot is up on hill, garage will be placed as far back from the road as possible, approximately 183 feet from the front property. Garage doors will not face the road. The side facing the road will have windows placed in it to make the appearance as much as possible as a residence, and it will be escaped appropriately to screen it from the road. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the property is an irregular S-shaped and angular living where the garage might go, and the subject fields are located in the west in the location selected, which create the least amount of land and visual disturbance. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above-stated variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now you'll deal with the building department.
Yep.
And Jim's gonna write up his amended language there to give to Pam and Lisa. Okay, item number seven, Appeal 3923 Riggins. Edward and Janet Riggins, 134 Jansen Road Homes, is requesting a three-foot sideline variance for an existing 24-foot by 24-foot detached garage, which was built in front of the dwelling in 1985, and a 50-foot rear line variance for an existing dock pursuant to Sections 194-107C and 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we had an opportunity to review your application with you last month. You actually have had this existing structure there, uh, but with the storm a couple of years ago, that would, the storm actually last May.
The tornado?
Yeah, the microburst, or whatever they wanna call it. The tree fell on top of it and pretty much destroyed it.
Several, several, several trees, three trees, two or three feet across, did 20, almost $30,000 worth of damage.
Wow, okay, so you now need to replace...
The roof.
The roof. Um, and so, but in reviewing your application to replace it, um, it came to the attention that the garage was actually off from the sideline, that you needed the sideline variance, and, and that there's also a deck in the back that needs, no, we're taking that away.
We, we decided that's within the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction.
I, I was gonna say, it's, we have...
We take, we took that away.
So, so we don't think that's in with the sports jurisdiction after further review, but you may wanna check...
Are we calling that a dock at this point?
Sorry, what you're saying?
Are we calling that a dock at this point?
Whether we call it a deck or a dock, we still don't think it's within the sports jurisdiction.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, most of it is not even, almost all of it's not even on my property.
We think that may be in, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction, though, 'cause maybe navigable waters.
Sure, I've, I've contacted the DEC before.
It's a, it's a different agency.
Army Corps is different than the U.S.
It's a federal agency.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's fine.
Okay.
It's fine, we, almost, almost everyone on the lake has, has a dock.
Okay.
Some of them are la, some of them are lateral, and some of them are vertical, we have both.
We're, we're taking that out of our review, okay?
Thank you.
I know you originally applied for it, but we're just not even going to consider it. So I did wanna read into the record, we did get the letter that you provided regarding from your homeowners association. So for the record, dated September 19th, um, to the town of East Fishkill Zoning Department, Edward and Janet Riggins have been residents on Lake Dutch, Lake Duchess for over 30 years. The Lake Duchess Association has never had any objection to the existing docks on their lakefront property. The docks have been in place as long as any current resident can remember, and have never interfered with the quality of the lake or the use of the lake by other residents or the community. Sincerely, Patrice George. So thank you very much for getting that letter.
Thank you. I'm sorry I was late in getting it to you, we only got it a few days ago.
No, that's fine, no problem. Tonight was when we asked for it, or when we asked you to have it for.
Okay.
So, that, it works. So, before I open up for public comment, are there any comments or questions from board members?
For the record, you have given some very nice photographs, and I'd like to have them entered into the records if they're not already done.
Yes.
And I do just want to say that, again, this dock is supported...
Well, again, the reason is, it has been mentioned because when I did my review, I thought we were going to be discussing this.
Yes.
So, when I saw the photographs, I said, "Okay, great." But again, it's not our purview, but again, for the record, we did have the photographs, they are part of the record.
Yes, okay.
And we have addressed it, that it's not in our jurisdiction at this point.
Thank you.
So, that's why we're not addressing it at this point.
Yep.
But again, all the inspections and everything else that...
I did just want to mention, when it comes to the shed, or you're calling it an outside garage, that the building inspector, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, is that when you visited, you noted that there was no electrical inspection. And I do have to say that there were several inspections that have been lost or, I don't know where they are, but we did have, I actually had a small backhoe at the time and dug the footings myself. The foundation and all that was inspected. The framing was inspected, and to my knowledge, there was even a final inspection on this structure. And what I included in the pictures were pictures of the 200-amp panel that's in that structure that was inspected August and September of 1993. And those aren't in your records either, and I requested public, you know, records, and I paid for them, and those records weren't in there either. So, I just want to demonstrate the fact that there can be missing records from people's past.
Actually, different jurisdictions, though. The town doesn't do electricals.
I understand that. We hired underwriters to do it at the time, but again, those records don't exist in your files. It could be their fault, I know, but I'm just saying, things have gotten lost between my addition and this shed over the years, even to the point where, and I just, I don't want to take your time off, I know it's a long night, but my addition, when I called up to get a final CO, they said we had no inspections on it, which is crazy, because we had steel brought in on a crane, and it was inspected by Sven Nordland personally at the time, and there's no record of that. So, again...
Understood.
You don't put that kind of steel up and not have somebody look at it, because you know what? It cost me $30,000, I'm not going to have it not be right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Pam, turn these back. All right, so, no other comments from board members, or?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Edward and Janet Riggins, 134 Jansen Road Homes, requesting a three-foot sideline variance for an existing 24-foot by 24-foot detached garage built in front of the dwelling in Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
This is Appeal number 3923, applicant is Edward and Janet Riggins, requesting a three-foot sideline variance for an existing 24-by-24-foot detached garage which was built in the front of the dwelling in 1985 pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas this action is a type 2 action under secure, and no further action is required, and where the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the garage has been in existence since 1985 and was damaged during a hurricane, and the applicant would like to replace the roof and add dormers, windows, in order to make it more aesthetically pleasing. The desired results cannot be achieved by some other means as the structure has been in existence for many years. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of, by Edward and Janet Riggins, 134 Jensen Road Homes, for a three-foot sideline variance for an existing 24-foot by 24-foot detached garage which was built in front of the dwelling in 1985 pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance on the condition that the applicant obtain any necessary permits or approval from the United States Army Corps of Engineers for any deck-like or dock-like structures located on any part of the water body abiding their property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, you'll just deal with the building department.
That's it, thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
All right, item number eight, Appeal 3924, Fitzgerald. Mary K. Fitzgerald, 39 Moonlight Drive, Stormville, is requesting a four-foot sideline variance for a proposed wraparound front porch pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You are making me very curious why you're moving a box around, but...
For the PTA.
Oh, okay. I'm like, what could you possibly be bringing?
950 copies have to go in packs of 30.
I thought you brought dinner.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, so we did have an opportunity to review your application last time around. You've actually, you gave us a drawing, you gave us, you know, a really good sense that the only reason you're looking to do this, it's going to make your house look so much nicer with this wraparound porch. So, you know, the porch itself is not wide, you're not looking to make this any extensive or anything like that, but it really does truly improve the aesthetics of your home, and you want to be able to enjoy, you know, sitting outside for a little bit. With that said, any questions or comments from board members?
I'm fine.
I just like some of her answers on applications.
It's nice to see people actually read the questions and answer the questions.
Yes, I'm glad it will help a lot emotionally and sad it will hurt substantially financially.
I know, I feel like, how can I pay for this?
But it'll be such a joy.
Seriously, I have no questions or anything like that.
So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Mary Fitzgerald, 39 Moonlight Drive, Stormville, requesting a four-foot sideline variance for a proposed wraparound front porch? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sure.
Appeal number 3924, applicant's name is Mary K. Fitzgerald, requesting a four-foot sideline variance for a proposed wraparound porch pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. The address is 39 Moonlight Drive in Stormville. Resolution is being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limetone, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas this action is a type 2 action under secure, and no further action is required. And whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as it would add to the aesthetics of the home as well as fit in with the other homes with front porches in the neighborhood. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the garage is on the opposite side of the house. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variance. Second by?
Is there a second?
Second.
And the votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thank you for reading that so dramatically.
Thank you for noticing.
All right, our last public hearing this evening is, actually, no, we've got to deal with item number 10. Ramirez, sorry, we're on, sorry, we're now on reviews. That was, that was our last public hearing, so now we're on reviews. So, item number nine is Appeal 3896, Katral, Gunther Katral, 110 Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 1,600-square-foot variance for an existing 40-foot by 40-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
So, the board has had an opportunity to review this a couple times. We know Mr. Katral has brought an attorney on, he's now got an engineer on board to be able to help him, because obviously this was built without any approvals in place. There are flooding issues in this area that are now impacting neighbors downstream, so we've asked that you take a look at, Brian, what is, is there any way to mitigate the impact of the neighbors, and then how much fill, what are we looking at? We don't even know how much fill got brought in, so I know you've done some analysis, if you could fill us in.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Yep, I had a meeting with Rick Witt back in August, and kind of went through the floodplain development permit process, gave him an idea of how we'd like to attack this, to try to back into how much fill was brought on site for both garages. Obviously, the larger garage was constructed a long time ago, with the newer garage constructed recently. We had the surveyor go out on site, we had him take a bunch of shots on the rear of the property, we established elevation. So, what I tried to do is, in this rendering here that we put together for you, I know this is probably the first time you're seeing it, but the area shaded in green, the middle map, the middle section of the plan, that's what we determined to be the extent of the limits of fill that was brought in for both garages combined. If you look at the topography, it's kind of clear on they, where they brought the material up, so where the garages, let's see, like the finished floor elevation for both garages, they probably brought in about four feet of material for the slab areas. So then what we tried to do is figure out the material amount. So, if you're looking at the bottom section, I show two borrow areas for fill to be removed. So, the green area, that's shaded, encircled, I estimate he probably brought in about 1,400, 1,500 yards of material, probably more toward the 1,500-yard material quantity, that's for both garages. If you look at the front borrow area, which is the one closest toward the house, it's the larger one, that's what I estimate for fill to be taken out to support the garage that was existing several years ago. The area behind the garages is the material that I estimate needs to be taken out to support the creation of the second garage. So, in total, I estimate 1,500 yards of material was brought into the site. The two areas shaded in yellow represent just a hair over 1,500 coming back out. So, that would have an offsetting effect on the floodplain. Material in, material out, they'd be level, they'd be zeroed out. We took a look at the construction of the garages, they're haunched-style slab, basically slab on grade with an extended perimeter, concrete grade beam, let's say. And speaking of Rick Witt, what we're going to do is, we're going to drill a couple of elliptical piles down into the ground at the corners of each of the slab areas until they meet tension, and then we're going to attach some foundation brackets to the edge of each foundation slab. We'll bolt them in, we'll healthy them in, and that will control any kind of buoyancy issues if the water does rise, it will be anchored to the ground. And then, when the water does rise up and the foundation is stable, I show a series of flood vents to be installed around the perimeter of each detached garage, and these meet the FEMA standards. I understand Rick from the town would have to review this, obviously the town engineer would have to review this, but these are the concepts that we discussed back in August. We've now finalized them and put them on a plan.
So, you can show that it works?
That it works.
Okay, we still have to deal with the issue of whether this even makes sense, honestly.
Yeah, so we, I think we got past a technical aspect of impacts to neighbors. I think we've solved that here with this display.
So, by taking, I mean, just to make it more obvious for the record, by taking out the fill that's existing there, or taking out the ground that's there...
Right.
You're creating more water capacity in storm events, or, you know, for the spring thaw things, so that it, the water doesn't need to go further offsite, you would be able to hold more water here on site, probably, you know, essentially the amount of water that would have been held before the previous fill was brought in.
Right, it's a volumetric offset, so there should be no impact to neighbors upstream or downstream.
Okay, so, in your calculation, because it's included in the green area, did you also include that carport?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the other, how far are you going down? Are we now considering whether we're going to have ponds here?
Yeah, I knew that would be the first question, but yeah. So, if you look at the area, let's say, close to the house, we're going down about three feet in that general area behind the garage location, we're going down about two feet. To give you perspective, the swale that runs between the two residences, and then it gets conveyed to the creek, you're down from existing grade to the bottom of that ditch line, about four feet from existing grade, five feet from existing grade, so it will not turn into a pond.
And that swale will connect the two, front and back, so there's not going to be a problem getting to the front now.
But is the water that's really, you're trying to give more storage to, I mean, the site grades, it goes down. Where the garages are, it's substantially down lower than where you are at the road.
Oh, correct.
So, is this area that you're creating in the front actually going to help? Because that's going to collect runoff from the road as opposed to coming from the floodplain down below.
It's going to, it's going to help the floodplain down below, the road is substantially higher.
That's what I'm saying, but you're, it's first, it's, I guess we're still a ways up from, away from the road, is what you're saying. Okay.
Let me ask that same question in a different way.
Yeah, go ahead. You know this area better than I do.
The lowest spot of the front area, is that above the height of the rear area?
Uh, one foot higher.
Like a 10-foot difference between what you're taking out in front and what you're taking out in back?
No, it's only, it's only one foot higher.
Okay.
It's only one foot.
So, we're really in that back area that's pretty low?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that correlates to the actual ground elevation difference, because I think where the, where your front, where your front borrow area is, we're about a foot and a half higher than, than where the shed area is, so it's balanced out.
What's running through my mind as you're saying is, it's one thing, you know, if you estimate that 1,500 square yards was brought in of fill, but that...
Cubic yards.
Yeah, cubic yards, but that was on a lower piece, so you take 1,500 out, maybe you have to take more than 1,500 out to get to the same overall level?
So, the...
Do you understand what my question is?
Yeah, but see, so the floodplain is all the way up, the floodplain limit is all the way up to halfway down the applicant's driveway.
Yeah.
So, when Rick...
The garages shouldn't have gotten built.
Right. When Rick and I, when we, when we spoke about it, the floodplain is so much higher, whether the fill is here or taken out here or here elevation-wise, floodplain is still, the level is still chest-high, let's say, and the borrow areas are between waist and, let's say, knee-high.
Okay.
So, on an overall scale.
Can he use this fill somewhere else on site?
Not on site.
Not on site, okay.
It's got to come out.
So, he can't even up closer to the road or anything like that, he can't, it's got to get carted off. But it cannot get carted off to another property on Van Black Road?
Unless I want to make some money.
Or, yeah, well, that's true, actually, yeah. We actually did approve a fill permit over there, so...
And that'll be clean fill.
Okay.
Let her know.
Okay, that may, I just want to, we have issues with another property on Van Black Road, so I just want to be clear that this would not go there. Okay, so, so from an engineering perspective, you are saying that you can, you can address the storm water storage capacity areas?
Yeah, we've mitigated any impact to the floodplain with these improvements. So, we're on to the, I believe we can move forward with the next white elephant in the room, which is...
So, now we get to the, why do we really need two really, really oversized garages? The code allows you to have, as I said earlier, you're allowed to have one garage that's up to 750 square feet or 60% of the footprint of your building. That was pretty much taken up with the first garage, okay? But the second garage, the 1,600 square feet, again, shouldn't even be there. And it, I mean, what worries me more is, like, because I, as you know, I've been to see this and driven by, it looks very industrial over there. It makes the property look like, what's going on? Why would there be industrial-like structures be all the way in the back there? But I also question, are there any variances, or can he just put up a carport without needing any? It's not a garage, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a concrete floor, does it? Okay, so, I mean, yes, it also needs a permit, but...
It depends if it's detached, too.
Well, it is detached, but is it attached to one of the other structures, one of the garages?
Like a foot between.
Okay, so it's not?
No.
Okay, so no, it's detached.
So, I think, yeah, that...
We have to deal with it, but it doesn't necessarily need variance.
It's something I think we'll refer back to, once we, because I know now we have to review the plan, is staff as well, so I think that's something we could take a look at during our review.
Okay, so, yeah, at a minimum, has Rick taken a look at this plan? Okay.
And that's why I wanted to say, thank you for the board for being patient with us. By the time we got surveying, got through workload, and got this plan together, I know it was kind of a late submission. So, Rick, I haven't sat down with Rick yet, but everything that we show here was based upon our previous conversation.
Okay. So, we did previously speak with you about the fact that your existing house actually has garages as well. So, not only does your house have a garage, you built one garage, and now there's this 1,600 square foot garage. I don't think we ever got a floor plan for how you use that garage, what's actually in there, and we have asked for floor plans before, so that's not unusual. I think we need to understand, why do you need all this garage space? You're saying you're not running a commercial business there, so...
It's just classic cars that I store, especially in the wintertime.
And they are your cars, they're not other people's cars.
They don't mind, they're registered to me, I got old paperwork.
How many cars are there?
Quite a bit.
Probably doesn't want his wife or spouse to know, right?
He doesn't probably want to advertise.
You don't want to advertise that too much, yeah.
All right, as long as, I mean, it's important that they, again, we can't be having you run a business here.
No, no, no.
Okay, so it can't be other people, you're storing other people's vehicles and other things there.
I'm a telephone contractor, I, you know, I'm a telephone man, I'm not a... I'm a telephone contractor, I, you know, I'm a telephone man, I'm not a...
You're a telephone, okay.
It's just my hobby.
Okay, at one point you told us you were gonna be moving back into the house, and you were not gonna be leasing it anymore.
I wanna settle this mess that I created here.
Okay.
You know, then I can focus more down the road.
Okay, because I know you said you had a commute, so it was not necessarily convenient for you to move back, move in, but...
Well, right now, I'm on Bay of Pac, I'm about ten minutes away from the house, I'm there every other day.
Oh, okay.
It's just, you know, it's nice to be in a three-lane commute to go to work than two-lane all the way out.
Okay.
But eventually, you know, I will go back in.
Okay, so what I'm gonna recommend is that, we're not, I don't think we're ready for a public hearing yet, we need professional review of this, not doubting your skills at all, but we just need Rick, to confirm that, you know, he agrees with the analysis here, and then if you don't mind, I think, I would like to ask for a floor plan for how you're using both garages, I think I need to understand, I mean, sixteen hundred square feet is just, it's really large, that's gonna, that's gonna fit quite a number of vehicles, plus the other garage that you have, plus the carport, so I'm trying to understand why you need, you know, so if you can give us a floor plan for how the both structures are being used, that would be helpful, and I, we know, we've seen the picture, so we know the carport had a certain type of vehicle in it, but, yeah, if we, if we could, you know, it's, we have to document a file, if any of your neighbors wanna, you know, be able to take a look at, we just have to be there.
You're gonna do, take pictures of the car inside, or...
If that's helpful, or if you could just lay out how it's being, physically being used, okay?
Yeah, I have a concern, your application is for a forty-foot, forty-foot existing garage, but your application up here has a carport and two detached garages.
Because this, this one, he actually got the permits for, the first one, he got the permits for.
For the, for these two?
It's the second one, not for the carport, but he's then built a second one and a carport.
But that's not listed here.
But the carport doesn't need variance.
Okay.
The second garage needs a variance, because he's exceeding the amount of detached garage space he's allowed by...
Oh, I see, because it didn't indicate that, that this is approved and this is...
Because his application is so old at this point? We heard, we covered that when we first opened, you know, when we first started hearing it, he has the permits for this one, this, so the entire sixteen hundred square feet is not allowed.
So, it's, so this one is forty by forty, and this is also forty by forty?
It's a little bit smaller, the other one.
Yes.
The other one's like fifteen hundred and change, or something.
It's listed on there somewhere, or is...
I think, I think you got seventeen and change for the one that has a permit, and you have sixteen and change for the...
Oh, so it's larger? Oh, okay, I thought for some reason it's smaller.
The existing one is the, the first CO garage?
So, he used up the square footage, he was allowed by the formula for garage in the, with the first one, but he's now also built the carport, but again, we don't see that that needs any variances.
Okay.
It just becomes a structure for the building department to deal with.
Okay, and this is the, this is the new one?
Brian, which is the new one? The one further back, or the one...
This is the new one, right?
The one further back looks like it's large.
Yeah, the larger one, let's say, to the left.
Okay, is it the one that, attached to the carport?
That has a CO. The carport, the one that has a CO has a carport behind it.
Okay, so that is the, that's the old one.
Okay, old, with the carport, no problem, it's the new one, okay.
Yep.
Let me do one, okay?
No, I was just kidding.
All right, any other questions? If not, we'll have Rick do his review, and then we'll see you next month.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, by the way, Aziz, for your information, next month there may be a trial in this room, and so right now we are booked for the fire district headquarters.
Okay.
Okay, but by the time the notices go out, we are gonna make it, find out whether the trial will in fact still be on, so, all the notices will go out with the appropriate address, and then we're just gonna stick with whatever site it's gonna be. Okay, item number ten is the appeal three nine one two for Ramirez, he's, he has since withdrawn his application, if you remember, that was the gentleman who had the conservation easement buy on his house, so I do need a motion to make a refund, but for all but five dollars of his application fee.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so, okay, to refund. And then, item number eleven, appeal three nine one eight, Cronin, Patrick Cronin, twenty-one oh nine Route fifty-two, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow the parking of commercial vehicles in a residential zone pursuant to section one ninety-four dash fifty-two of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, so, um, so since we last met, we've been trying to do a little bit of homework on your agricultural district, district application, just to see, have you been able to find out anything related to that?
Hmm, I didn't know I was supposed to.
Oh, we had asked you what your original application said.
I don't think it says anything, you apply to be in the district and...
Well, you know, you do, and, and the agricultural district, and Dutchess County's now confirmed this, and I have it in writing by email, the agricultural district is for agriculture and livestock.
Okay.
So, as far as Dutchess County is concerned, what you are, the storage and, or, you know, using commercial vehicles on the, on this is not part of an ag district, it's not really allowed, but they did, said their official response to our referral about your application, because it is on a state road, so they do have referral authority under general municipal law, was that your application wasn't actually complete, so they did need additional information. Have we gotten any additional information, Pam? Okay, so we can't even move forward until there's a complete application?
Which application is not complete?
Pam, did they actually say what was missing? Can you pull out the letter? We had this before the last meeting, when you couldn't be here, so that's why, it's not in my head right now.
Yeah, it says, uh...
Oh, thank you.
The submitted application for the proposed use variance includes responses to questions designed to evaluate an area variance request, not a use variance. The applicant noted in the application that the parcel is an agricultural district. In consultation with New York State Department Agriculture and Market, it appears that the tree service business occurring on the subject property is not considered a crop, livestock, or livestock product, per agricultural district's law, and is therefore not eligible for protection under the statute, as such, local land use controlled by the town would solely govern the proposed use. The department requests that the board re-submit this application when the above-mentioned information is available. Once this is done, we'll initiate a formal thirty-day review.
All right, so, what they're saying is, are you requesting a use variance, because you wanna change the use of the property by storing commercial vehicles on there, or are...
I've been storing commercial vehicles on the property for twenty years.
That doesn't mean you've been doing it legally.
I, I, we've, we went around and around with that the last time.
Two different entities you're speaking, though, too, also, one you're speaking with New York State, and one is the town of East Fischko.
Okay, and I will reiterate that...
Please let him finish, just...
I'm sorry.
Which is what the letter's referring to, and says, if you're looking for something that's different, then local zoning law applies, otherwise they need a complete application for what you're requesting, so, the problem, as I see it, based on the letter, is if you're not gonna comply with their rules, then you're gonna lose your agricultural district from the state.
Uh, I don't see that I'm not complying with their rules, it's how it was presented to them, all of the equipment on the property is used in the farm.
Okay, so then you gotta complete that application for their consideration.
I didn't realize that I had to have an application for every piece of equipment that I have, does, does every farm in town apply to, every time they get a new piece of equipment?
I don't know.
To have the equipment on the property?
I'm not a farmer, I'm not running an agricultural district, and I do know is, they have responded with a letter, they're asking for more information, to argue with us about that, we can't resolve it.
Wasn't arguing, I was asking a question.
Well, again, but you're asking questions, what you want me to answer, you have to answer them.
So, we're back to, is this, you know, again, the commercial vehicles are not allowed, it's not an agricultural use?
My conversation, my conversation with them was...
With who?
With, with New York State Ag and Markets, about the equipment was to go for the variance, and if it was denied, then they would review it.
Okay, what type of variance?
The use variance that I applied for here.
You're applying for a use variance? Or are you applying for an area variance? That's what, that's what Dutchess County is saying. They're, they're not clear whether you're applying for a use variance or an area variance.
Applying for a use variance to park commercial vehicles.
So, you're telling us that your property is not economically viable without changing its use? The agricultural use on this is not economically viable?
And, yeah, before you answer that question, I'm not sure whether you wanna speak with an attorney and make sure what you're asking for, because there's different consequences, I'm just being polite, I may not seem like a polite response, but I'm trying to be polite. You may wanna speak to an attorney and find out what you're asking for before you go forward, because it could be further consequences to your property, depending on what you ask for, and I know you've gone through a lot with counsel and stuff before about the agricultural district and stuff, so, think about it.
I shall.
Did you get a copy of the letter that...
I did not.
Is it, yeah, is it possible to get it from, I mean, from our staff tomorrow?
Yes, it is.
And then just say, okay, guys, what's going on here?
Pam, can you put one in the mail to him?
I'll come by and get it.
Okay, she'll mail it to you, beautiful.
I'll save the town forty-five cents, or whatever a stamp costs now.
I think it's a little bit more than that.
I think they're over fifty cents.
She's gonna make it right now.
Email is a beautiful thing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, she's gonna just make a copy right now.
Okay.
That's perfect, so, do you wanna wait, or come back next month and pursue it?
Well, we don't wanna keep this out there forever, because, again, commercial vehicles should not be parked in residential neighborhoods, so we do have to deal with this, it's just a matter of what are we dealing with, okay, so we have to be clear what your application is requesting.
I understand.
Okay, so, is there any additional information you wish to offer tonight, or...
No.
So, what we'll do is, we'll have you sit down waiting for Pam, or wait in the lobby for Pam to get you the copy of the letter, and we'll move on, and then we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right.
So, are we gonna...
It's not an adjournment, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, so it's a...
It's not ready for public hearing.
Okay, so it's a review for...
Review next.
We're in reviews.
Review, okay, perfect.
More review. Item number twelve, appeal three nine two five, William Tell Hardware, Dave Tell of William Tell Hardware, eight twenty-seven Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for our proposed building, a seven-foot variance for parking circulation, a point-nine percent variance for the floor area ratio, a three-foot height variance, and a variance to the parking requirements in order to allow six less parking spaces than required pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen, one ninety-four dash eighteen, one ninety-four dash three sixty-one of the zoning ordinance, and then I get to the bend where it says, the applicant is requested to be adjourned to next month, so, they are not even here, my apologies. Item number thirteen, appeal three nine two six, Justice Ryder, Xena Justice and Andrew Ryder, seven to Homel Drive, Hopewell Junction, are requesting an eight-foot rear line variance for our proposed eighteen-foot by forty-foot in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Good evening, so, you're the first, this is the first time we're seeing your application, so...
Oh, okay.
Yes, so if you don't mind taking us through what it is that you're looking for, that would be helpful.
Okay, um, do you need a copy of the survey?
We have your application.
Yeah, okay, we got, uh, excuse me, yeah, we'd like to put in a swimming pool, and unfortunately, there's not much great place for it, we've got a slope property, a lot of the downhill part of the slope is occupied by a, the septic system, the, why am I spacing the term? Leach field.
Yeah.
Leach field, septic field, neither one.
Yeah, so we'd like to put it up on the more level side.
So, is your house up from the cul-de-sac? You're on a cul-de-sac, at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yes, we are.
And so if you're, so anybody who's driving in the cul-de-sac, first off, it's not a through street, so that limits how many people would see it, in essence, it's gonna be in your side yard, which, which is allowed, but it's just gonna be very, it could be very visible, but if you're saying you're, the grade goes up from the road a little bit, so...
Uh, no, the area we'd put the pool is about level with the cul-de-sac.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, yeah.
So, what are you proposing, I see a fence, but what are you proposing in terms of screening, in terms of, you know, how, how are you gonna limit the visibility of this, I mean, you don't want people, if you're using your pool, necessarily watching what you're doing in there either, so...
That's certainly true.
Yeah.
We hadn't thought about any screening in front.
You're gonna need a fence around the pool, you're talking about what height of a fence?
We do have the entire yard fenced in, is that sufficient, or, or does there have to be additional fencing around the pool itself?
As long, what's the height of the fence around it?
The height, the fence around the pool is, I, around the yard...
So, it's four foot?
Is, about that, yeah, yeah.
So, Rick, yes, that's, that works.
Is that the black aluminum fence?
It is, yes.
Okay, so standard black aluminum fence.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any screening in front of that fence?
No.
Are you proposing to put any screen, I'm just asking, how visible is the pool gonna be in its use?
Yeah, yeah, we had not, we had not thought of that, yeah.
Because pools generate noise, kids are running in and out of it, they're screaming, they're, you know, excited, they're, you know, splashing each other.
We don't have kids, but we do have dogs.
Well, okay.
And they make enough noise.
And, and here, by the way, I do wanna mention, the building inspector did do a site visit for the board members, and commented that everything you've done on your property is all to the permits and as it should be, and, so, you know, he gave you high marks for your...
Oh, good.
Following a town code, so...
Glad, yeah, we try.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, it's very, certainly very nice property, so, have you talked to your neighbor about this, or do they have any concerns about this?
Uh, no, we haven't talked with our neighbor about that.
Okay, how close is their home on the other side, you know, past the pool, the house that's, that would be on that lot?
Uh, we have, let's see, a property, a neighboring property to the...
Pretty large.
Uh, west, and they would be a little bit forward, and, my gosh, probably seventy-five to a hundred feet minimum away from the pool.
Well, and there are driveways between you, their driveway's gonna be to the right side of their house, so, that puts their house a little bit further away.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is a property behind us, but there's considerable wooded area there.
Oh, yeah.
And as soon as we filed this application, they actually came in with a bulldozer, but they stopped about fifty, I'll say twenty-five to fifty yards short of our fence line, so I thought they were gonna go right up the fence line and ruin our application, but there's still probably a good twenty-five to fifty yards of wooded area directly behind the house.
Between you and your neighbor at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's also some vegetation, some trees there, too, right?
Yeah, the, the neighbor downhill from us, uh, they're quite, they're quite far away, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it just looks like there's either...
Yeah, that would be...
Looks like there might be some trees, I don't know, pass this around to...
There are, there are some, it's not as thick as towards the rear.
Right, okay.
But, it's a pretty good separation, you know.
I mean, I don't necessarily see an issue with the size of it, it's, you know, it's, it's just that it's a pool, so...
And they're requesting eight foot and...
Well, it's an eight-foot rear line variance, so, actually, to have it go further, what he's saying, what, to eliminate the variance, he'd have to put it more in his front yard.
Exactly, it would have to go closer to the street.
That's silly, that's, you know, so...
And the area to the back is the wooded area, so, and that is the area where...
You've already put it sideways, so you're already putting the shortest side of the pool, the eighteen feet is already what's headed toward, toward the back, so...
Correct.
You can't shrink the eighteen feet, not for an in-ground pool, that's, it can't go a whole lot smaller unless you go like with a kidney shape or something.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the fact, the fact that it's a rear line variance, I'm, I'm not too concerned.
What's your advice?
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so we'll see you next month for the public hearing.
Okay.
See PM at the end, she's gonna give you your instructions for your sign.
Great.
And then, we'll, you know, then we'll see you next month.
Great.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Those are the handles for the file. Okay, item number fourteen, appeal three nine two seven, Polanco, Polanco, Abelca, Polanco, fifteen Fenwick Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a thirty-six-foot rear line variance for an existing twenty-four-foot by twenty-two-foot carport, for which a building permit was issued in nineteen ninety-eight pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ten of the zoning ordinance. I'm gonna guess you were not the person who pulled out a building permit in nineteen ninety-eight, so...
I just purchased the house this year.
Okay, all right.
Back in January, yeah.
So, you're looking to clean up something that somehow popped up somewhere?
That's right.
Let me just take a look and...
Oh, I see, you got a lot of side property on one side, huh?
Okay, but the permit was void, so, there was a permit that was issued, Rick, but it's actually, because the time, at some point, the building department just went in and cleared out all outstanding old permits. The question that we have is, is it a carport or is it a garage?
It's a carport, it's a fine carport, however, it's not used for car parking.
What we think is that the original permit that was pulled in 1998 was actually, has been converted into a garage.
Okay.
Because your original house did not have that garage.
Correct.
Okay, so the original 1998 permit was for the garage, what's now a garage. But it might have been a carport at that time. Now, there's another carport.
Correct.
Okay, so you actually have two structures that we have to deal with, okay? So, the, the fact that the 1998 permit is labeled here is actually, that's nothing to do with the carport that you're now actually asking for.
Correct. Um, it was originally filed, it's my understanding, it was originally filed as a carport and converted into a garage.
And was converted at some point.
But they did, however...
But not with a permit.
Correct.
So, we have to deal with the fact that there is a permit and CO missing on that garage. Have you had an opportunity to do any kind of inspection on the finished structure?
Just a quick visual.
Okay. Alright, so you, you will have to close that out at some point? But let's deal with now the carport.
Okay, where is the other garage? I, I, only one is mentioned, carport.
Cause it's...
It's attached to their house.
Actually attached to their house.
Oh, okay, so that's why...
It was just converted.
Right.
Yeah, hold on one second, let me see if I have Rick's pictures.
So that is detached garage is fine, right? Or that's slightly closer to the...
Here, I have some pictures that Rick went out, when he went out and did an inspection. So this, it was originally a carport, and they converted to a garage.
Yeah.
Okay, and now, there's a second structure in the back.
Yeah, my question is, the first structure, that, that doesn't need any variances. I mean, they have to clear up the permit maybe.
They have to clear up the permit.
If there's any variances required for that?
Do we have a survey? Hold on, we do have a survey.
The survey was submitted with the application.
Yeah, we have a survey.
But again, the thing is...
They're not showing setbacks on that, on the house at all.
Uh, but again, this carport that you're talking about, is that the, like a gazebo, open near gazebo kind of a thing?
With a red roof?
Yeah.
We use it for...
But you're calling it a carport?
Right, it's a, it's a carport structure.
So, so what we believe is, they, they, they pulled out the permit for the carport, ordered the carport, then changed it to the garage, made the garage, but then since they had the carport, they just said, "Let's put it in the backyard."
Maybe.
That's what they did with it.
We're guessing.
That's one explanation.
We're guessing.
But the bottom line is, you didn't do any of this.
Not at all.
You purchased the house with all of this in place.
Right, I purchased the house this year, this was all done apparently back in 98, based on the permits that we're able to pull.
Did your title insurance pick up these issues?
Uh, no.
Title report?
Well, I found out about the carport issue because Rick came out to the house to do a permit we filed for furnace.
Okay.
And he did a site visit, and that's when it was brought up to my attention.
If I were you, I would actually talk to the title insurance and say, "How come this was not cleaned up?", because it's their responsibility. Identify it first.
They should identify, but I don't know if they promised...
Yeah, it's not their responsibility to clean it up.
Well, no.
All they do is identify.
No, the thing is because...
But if they haven't given an exception...
The reason is, I have a situation, and I'm actually pursuing my title insurance, because they missed a bunch of things. So, um, it is, again, talk to an attorney about it.
Yeah, I didn't know it was an issue at all.
It depends what kind of title insurance you had, too, not all of them cover these sort of certificate of occupancy type issues.
It looks like we, we gotta address three things, we gotta address the carport, concrete patio, probably two doors.
I'm basically trying to work on one at a time at this point, just trying to...
Okay.
Yeah, they should have...
It does not appear that we have to worry about the existing garage, because the other corner is 62.4 feet away. Looking at their survey, which was just done on August of this year. So, yeah, the other corner's a little bit closer, but it's probably gonna be more than 12, she's got, what, more than 12 feet there. Your, your surveyor should label a couple more things on here, you honestly should be able to, he just did this, so you should be able to go back to him
Okay, I can.
And get some more markings on here. So what he did was, he labeled in their front yard the farthest corner from the, from the house to the street, but he didn't show us the closest corner, to be sure that you have the 50 feet that's required, your front yard, okay? So, he takes the other side's measurement to the Monaco Drive, and shows that it's 276.9 feet, but he doesn't tell us what it is to Fenwick.
Okay.
So we really do need an additional measurement on here, so I'm gonna ask you if you can go back, he should be able to do it very, very quickly for you.
Right, we just did this, um, last month for us.
The other thing is, we need to understand how far that concrete patio is in, because you're not taking that up, right?
No.
Okay, so we need to understand what the, how far that is in, because a patio is supposed to have a 15-foot, um, well, side yard setback. Well, that's what this would be, because there's a lot on the other side. No, wait, this is all, yeah.
Side, right, yeah.
That's all, because the other lot is yours. So we do need the measurements for that concrete patio from the, from the back of your house, I'm gonna guess, right?
Right, it's on, it's in the back of the house.
It's the back of the house, okay, so, from there, from the, from the back, from that back of the concrete patio to your property line, what is that measurement?
I thought that was on there, but I don't have a look up.
Unless somebody else sees it, I don't see it.
Yeah, and the shed is, you're 7.2 feet away.
And if that's 7.2, I'm gonna guess this is like two or three.
Four or five, yeah, yeah.
Now, the concrete patio, do you use it, or is it just a slab that's there?
We use it as a shaded area in the summer, you know, we sit out there, we have a hammock, we have some chairs, we don't use it for...
So then it is a use...
We're not trying to beat you up here.
Yeah, he should have done a better job, that's all.
You're asking for one variance?
You need one.
We're gonna address that, we wanna make sure you get all your variances at one time.
Right.
Yeah, this way you're good.
I appreciate that, yes.
Do you have the ability to move that shed at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
It's all anchored down, and it's, um, concrete floor.
So, cause the shed, I have to, there's so many codes I have in my head, I can't keep this town straight, so... The shed is, with the amnesty, had to be in 15 feet in from the...
Five.
Five for the amnesty, thank you, okay.
And I, I did, uh, I was informed about the amnesty.
I mean?
I was informed about the amnesty that's available for the, um, the shed in the corner, so I do have that application.
So the amnesty does work for the shed? Okay, good.
Yes.
Does she need a variance, or just, she's okay?
Well, I mean, you're here, we can just deal with it, it's not, you know...
Yeah, I would rather have it part of the record, so it's just cleaned up.
And this way it saves you having a, well, you still have to file for the permit for it anyway. No, you don't, because you only have one shed. And how big is that shed? That's the other thing, he's not telling us, giving us the measurements of these structures.
I don't know how big the shed is.
That's an eight by eight shed.
You're fine then. You bumped to 144 feet.
That's the other thing you have to have him put on here, is the size of these structures. So the carport should have sizes.
Okay.
And the shed should have sizes. They almost wanna mark one of these up and tell you, you know...
That'd be, that'd be great.
Patio, I guess, you could have him mark that, too.
And just tell him to put a ZB, you know, what do you call it?
Distance to a...
Doghouse we're not gonna worry about.
This way you get everything taken care of in one shot.
I appreciate it.
I had to do the same thing.
But the doghouse is in the front.
Okay, so I think...
Yeah, if he puts the distances, all the, he should have known better.
That's, I mean, but if he just did the purchase for the title company, or for the purchase of the land for the bank, I can understand why he didn't want to do that.
No, he did, he did not.
He did this for this application?
Correct.
Then he should have...
The house was purchased back in January, I just had him do that last month.
Okay.
He didn't mark the closest spots in the house, I was thinking that he didn't mark the rear line, but he did.
If he just puts the ZB variances, uh...
Yeah, we don't need a...
Not variances, but the...
We don't need a variance for the attached garage.
Which is the rear yard?
The, along the brush apart where...
Where's the 50-foot rear yard?
Need 50 feet for the back?
Yeah, because it's two, two sides, man.
Yeah, she's got, she's got two front yards.
Two front yards.
So her rear yard is only 32 feet, she needs a variance for the rear yard of her house.
I was thinking...
So...
There, or was it just...
We've gotta do an, an 18-foot variance for the rear of the house.
Then we have...
That was labeled, though.
Okay.
Alright, so, but by seeing it's only 32, that's what's telling me you need a rear line variance. So Pam, if you can add that variance, and then we're gonna need to know what the, we're gonna have to add a variance for the rear line for the patio, and the rear line, and possibly just, uh, a sideline variance for the shed. Okay, I'm gonna give you this, great.
Thank you so much.
It's marked up with what we need. I hope you can read my handwriting.
You marked the patio, too, right?
I got the patio.
Okay.
Oh, actually, you know what, he should give us size of patio.
Yeah.
Nor is it the rear line for the shed?
It's, the rear line is 7.2.
We have that.
He gave us that.
We don't...
We need a variance for that, but we may, he doesn't give us the distance to the sideline for the shed.
We need a variance for the sideline.
Is it 15 feet?
Well...
It might be more than that, so it might be okay, but he should still give it to us.
It's gonna be close to, it's gonna be close.
So, because we don't even know what variances you need, you're gonna have to come back again, for another review next month, okay? But you'll be one of the first reviews next time around, okay?
Are you having fun yet?
I hope you learned something at least this evening, so...
I have.
Alright, so we, so get back to your surveyor, as soon as you have the information, please get it in, okay? And then we'll see you guys next month, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Alright. And then last but not least, item number 15, Appeal 3928, Leonardo, Todd Leonardo, 106 Deer Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 6-foot rear line and a 12-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. So again, first time we're seeing your application, if you don't mind just taking us through.
Yes, um, like the couple before me, I'm cleaning up someone else's mess. I bought the house in 2011, and the shed was on the property, nothing got red flagged through title. So, it was this and other things that popped up.
Yes, I understand, again, from the building department, that you had a fence issue, but you cleared that up right away.
We got everything else taken care of, so we're down to the shed, and, um, so the issue is, we...
Your fence is located in, I'm sorry, your shed is located in the back corner, it's under the trees, it's probably the best location for it.
It's, yes, yeah, and we looked into possibly moving it, but even a few years ago, I replaced the floor, and there's some rot on the bottom of the boards, it wouldn't be possible to move it without just shelling it.
Did you put the shed in where it is?
Did I put it there? No. I just, I just renovated the floor, yeah.
Okay.